Well, welcome to the last Greeley-Evan School Board meeting of 2017. It's Monday, December 11th, 2017. This meeting is called order. Will you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no reason and justice for all.
Well, thank you for serving as secretary for us tonight. Would you confirm attendance via a roll call, Ms. Richards?
Yes. Mr. DeWitt?
Present.
Mr. Hayfley?
Present.
Mr. Lydiak?
Present.
Mr. Matthews?
Present.
Ms. Pappas?
Present.
Dr. Richard?
Present.
Mrs. Solis?
Mrs. Solis is excused this evening.
Six members present.
Thank you. Well, this my last shot of the year for a Board of Education announcement, so I'll refer, as I often do, to our three key words from our mission statement from the school district, "Engage, Empower, and Inspire." And tonight, I'll just quickly mention the "engage" part of this three-word mantra that the district is carrying around, I think for tonight, refers to the fact that the community elected four folks who are keen on supporting students as members of this group. The "empower" part is clearly the passage of 3A, the opportunity to put additional monies to support visible products, projects, and needs for the district. And really, the "inspire" part, without an awful lot of effort, we can say the people who serve our students, part-timers and full-timers, and substitutes, and staff, support staff, instructional staff, administrators, they really look to the social needs, they face the tragedies, and they certainly respond to such things as floods, and they do so all with the idea of supporting our kids in mind, and we certainly can say they inspire us. The next item is the hearing of persons desiring to speak before the board, and David Meek is here to present on the topic of a loss of a loved one. Pastor Meek?
Well, Merry Christmas! Right? Merry Christmas? Merry Christmas, good. I brought 'em. Sam's, 500 now, used to be 300. So, the true story of the Christmas candy cane, hopefully some of us will get it. Three little stripes stand for God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Ghost, the three nails that hung Jesus on the cross for us, and the red thick stripe stands for the blood of Jesus that was shed on the cross of Calvary for the forgiveness of our sins, and the Bible tells us by His stripes we're healed, and we surely need some healing in our district, not only physically, but the hurting healing, which I'll mention in a minute. Then, if you ask Jesus to be your Savior, would you have to do that? Doesn't automatically happen because John 1:12 says, "For as many as received Him, to them became the sons of God." That's the white stripe, "Wash it away, you, and make you white as snow." It is a shepherd's hook to go out and get lost sheep and people, bring it back into the church and the foe. J for Jesus. Of course, it's hard candy made for Jesus is a rock, and you put two together, and it makes Valentine's, for Jesus loves us and God loves us. Okay, I think I'll just have a little word of prayer because it's not always merry for a lot of people. And so, I pray for the district, I pray for this board, I pray for the principals and teachers, Lord, as they conclude this year, and especially for this family, Kristy McCullough, little girl that passed away. We especially hold them up in prayer and ask you, bring healing unto them, because you're the only one that can do that, and so, we ask you to do that. And we ask you, Lord, again, for your divine protection, and have mercy upon us, Lord, and be with us, Lord, as we celebrate your birth, and of course, you're coming back again, and Happy New Year. Amen. Oh, I made it.
So, I give you all Christmas cards.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, yeah. Give one to Ron.
Okay.
Over here. No, I'm gonna take that one back. You'll understand later. Whoop. I don't want to get accused. I'll make that keep out, I don't want to leave them all out. Anyway, okay. Okay. So, anyway, thank you all.
Thank you, Pastor.
I'll just lay them here, okay?
That'll be fine.
Don't you take them all.
Let's move ahead to the work session report, Ms. Richards, please.
Board of Education President Roger DeWitt and Superintendent Deirdre Pilch began the work session with comments and updates from board members. Dr. Pilch introduced Dr. Stacy Dattery and Mr. Drew Palmer, who shared an update regarding the data dashboard, which is a visual tool that tracks the progress of the strategic plan initiatives. President DeWitt and Dr. Pilch led a discussion on the superintendent evaluation form that will be used to collect feedback from each of the board members on the performance of the superintendent. Dr. Pilch then reviewed the I-2020 Strategic Plan Update Document, and board members had time for questions. Dr. Dattery provided an update on the school unified improvement plans, and that concluded the work session.
Thank you very much. Pretty busy work session tonight, thank you. Dr. Pilch, we're ending the year. You might have a few comments in your superintendent's report?
We are ending the year, and I appreciated your comments, Mr. DeWitt, about some of our accomplishments and challenges that we have faced this first half of the 1617 school year, 1718 school year, almost to 2018. I want to take a moment for all of us and recognize this past week. One week ago tonight, we learned that one of our first graders, S. Krista McCullough, had been seriously injured in an accident about an hour after school let out. She'd been playing on the playground and was entangled in a swing. And although she received care and treatment at the site, and the emergency personnel here in our community responded quickly, and lots of staff did lots of things right, and a parent assisted as well, she passed away this past Friday, and our hearts go out to this family and to the many others in our community who are grieving from this death. We are continuing counseling support for the students and the staff at S. Krista McCullough, and this is a very difficult time. It's a difficult time for children and adults alike to make sense of this accident and of this death. And I just want to say again that our deepest sympathies go out to this family and to the many community members who are grieving at this time. And I know the family has been in contact with several of us, and they've indicated how much they appreciate the words of support and words of encouragement. We did share today with our administrative staff information around the services that are planned as a celebration of life, and around a GoFundMe account that has been set up on behalf of the family or for the family. And so, I hope that all of you will do what feels right for you, as I know that many of you are grieving as well, and you too want to support this family, as well as the S. Krista McCullough K-8 STEM Academy family. And we're just, you know, we're just grieving together, and our sympathies are with the family at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is the approval of the agenda. It's an action item. I'd be glad to receive a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Terry.
Second.
Thank you, Julia. Comments, questions? Seeing nothing there, roll call, Ms. Richards?
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is the consent agenda. It's a motion, it's an action item. I'd be glad to hear a motion.
I move the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Roll call, Ms. Richards, please.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Well, the next item is the Ark of Weld County Bully Prevention Poster Contest, and I was sharing with a couple of our guests that my anti-bullying calendar has just about run out of months, so I can't be more excited than I am to be able to look forward to its publication. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Very excited to have a celebration tonight that involves our students. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm sorry. So, thank you, Mr. Gribble. He's coming to this podium to rescue me. But I must say, you know, we are in a people business, and all we do is people, really. We do, we just do people. We hire adults who then take care of the little people, and sometimes the little people are very little people, and sometimes the little people are big and almost ready to go to college, and so, today, we get to celebrate some of those little people who have been a part of an important program here in District 6, and an important partnership with ARC. And I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Tom Gribble, our Director of Special Education Services, to introduce his guests and to begin this honoring of some of the people that we do the people business with. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, and President DeWitt, and members of the Board of Education. It's my pleasure to be here with our partners from the Ark of Weld County this year, and I appreciate their continued partnership and leadership for this poster contest. This is our fourth annual one, and we couldn't do it without their partnership and their leadership. And so, some of the folks here from the ARC is Larry McDermott, our Executive Director, and I say "we" as I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Ark of Weld County, Kelsey Harvey, the Communication Outreach Coordinator, and a fellow Board of Director and parent, Stephanie Lewis. So, I'll turn it over to Stephanie, and we'll tell you a little bit more about the poster contest and the winners.
Thank you, everyone. Like Tom had mentioned, I am a board member at the ARC, and I'm also a proud mom of three with two kids in District 6. And this is something that ARC has been passionate about for four years now, partnering with Evans-Greeley School District, and our numbers just keep rising. Last year, we had 107 submissions, and this year, we have 246 submissions.
Wow, that's great.
So, increasing our numbers. It was very hard to not want to, just like every single poster that we saw, they were just all absolutely amazing, and we're really grateful to everyone who participated, as well as the staff that helped the students get this project done and going. The grand prize winner is receiving $100, and they will be featured on our website in our calendar, which you guys have received from last year. Their classroom will receive a pizza party, and an additional $100 will be donated to the school's art program. The second prize winner, we'll get $50, sorry, not 500. Poster, once again, will be featured in our newsletter and on our website, in the calendar. The classroom will also receive a pizza party, and an additional $50 will be donated to the art program as well at their school. And then, the third place will get $25, and the features will be the same, and the art program will also receive $25. We are so excited. The ARC ventured into this partnership four years ago, you know, specifically wanting to address our, some of our mission, mission statements of wanting to support people with intellectual disabilities, and we realized that, you know, bullying happens to everyone, and the kids that we were seeing the posters from were just so supportive of supporting other children within their schools and standing up for them, and we wanted to find a way to recognize all of them. So, this is how we all got started. Our first place, actually, our third place winner was from Frontier Academy, an eighth grader, Caitlin Merritt, and she is not here today. Our second place winner was from Heath Middle School, Aspen Hermits. And our first place winner was Christian Guzman.
I can give Mr. DeWitt.
So, we would just like to say thank you guys so much for allowing us to come and honor all of these students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
So, we need fixtures.
Yes. Congratulations. We're going to talk with everybody once again. We also have the question, we want to present, we want $30. Can I take one with the families? Do you want to present? Nice. But you're all very special. Both of you did a very good job. Can you guys just stand between the hands? There we go, brother. Perfect. Yes. Okay, look at that. Congratulations, okay. You want shots of your kids? This is your good role. All right. Thank you. Yeah, I can take it from there. You get it? Okay, you take that one, and then I'll get the other.
Teresa's been crying to us. Yes, she has been.
Is that the one?
So, when will it come out? January?
You know, as soon as we get them, we'll forward them over to Tom and to the Board of Directors. We apologize for the delay.
No, no problem.
I'm anxious to see.
I just had one thing I wanted to say. My name's Larry McDermott, Executive Director from the Ark of Weld County. I was visiting with Christian's family, and Erica, Christian's mom, said something I think is very important to repeat, is that, because I was complimenting her on Christian, how he stands up for the right values, and she said, "It all starts with the family." You know, you have to have that foundation in the home, and I think both of these kids, all three of these kids that were recognized here, and that's one of the things that we've noticed over the years, is there's a lot of great kids out there. I think we see and hear about some of the sad things, like on the news in Tennessee right now, but I think that we want to make sure that we don't forget about the kids that are doing the right things. May not make news, but they are still doing some pretty amazing things in our school. So, thank you very much for partnering with us, and we hope to continue doing this as long as it's meaningful. So, thank you very much.
Well, you made news tonight. Thank you very much. All right, now, to both award winners, I thought I'd better say, this is a good time for you to go home and do your homework, because the rest of the board meeting may or may not be part of your assignment, so if you need to sneak out, you should probably think of doing so now. That is not to say that you wouldn't want to be in on the Council of Student Representatives report. And, Dr. Pilch, I think you're going to introduce our council members.
I am. I see Caitlin and Meg back there, making their way up to the podium, I think, here in a second. So, we have our president and our vice president of our Council of Student Representatives, both of whom were able to join us at the Colorado Association of School Boards Conference. It was a great time, and lots of learning and development, leadership development, I think, for the students who were a part of that, and great for us to get to spend some time with both of you. So, I'm going to turn it over to you two.
Thank you so much again for having us. First, we want to think about our talent show and thank Mrs. Pappas, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Hayfley, and Dr. Pilch for judging and hosting with me and just making that event really great. Meg's gonna talk a little bit about the talent show.
So, just a quick recap, we had some really wonderful students, mostly musical talents, I think entirely musical talents, actually, this year, and we raised over $1,000 for this. Really wonderful cause, and I promise it's not going in our pockets. It is going to a good cause, which Caitlin will mention in just a moment, but we hope to expand this project in the year and have you return to help us celebrate this talent in our district.
So, all of that money, last Sunday, we went, Mrs. Crane, who isn't here with us, she came with us, and we went shopping for gifts for kids in our community who maybe don't get gifts around the holiday season. So, we got about 50 gifts. We are having our next event this Friday here, from 7:00 to 9:00, if anyone is wanting to come and hang out with us. But we're gonna be wrapping those gifts for our second Weld-Meld event, and just kind of watching Christmas movies and drinking hot chocolate, and just kind of celebrating our year and everything that we've done with Weld-Meld, kind of starting from the ground and building it up, and looking forward to a great year with more events and more unity in our district. So, does anyone have questions about the talent show, or our next event, or anything of that sort?
Caitlin, will you email me the information on that event, that 7:00 to 9:00 event?
Yeah.
And I can send it out to the board so that they have that if they're able to attend?
Wonderful, yeah, and I'm working with Carlos Perez. He works with District 6, and he's helping us distribute some of those gifts, as well as we're giving about 10 kids from the Guadalupe Shelter gifts as well. So, they are going to a great place, and I think it was a great success, so.
All right. So, the next event that we'd like to discuss with you was just a bit of a more detailed recap of our experience at CASB. So, CASB stands for Colorado Association of School Boards, which I'm sure you know, and we would just very much like to thank you, first off, for allowing us the privilege to attend this event. It truly does make a difference to be able to share your experiences and your perspectives and your skills with other students and work towards a greater Colorado state for all of us within the district. Caitlin and I both had the fortune of working with students from all over, student leaders. I had the fortune of talking to some of them about their plans, and honestly, we're probably gonna have a president, but who knows? I had the fortune of speaking, or facilitating, I think it was called, the student panel at the board, which was absolutely incredible to be able to share that experience with so many other student leaders who want to share their perspectives and their wonderful new ways of solving problems with the world. Anyway, Caitlin and I are both graduating this year, but we look forward to being able to see students go in the future.
And so, to kind of bring back what we learned at CASB to our board, so a big thing that we focused on was the design thinking method, so it's essentially a problem-solving method, and we really delve into that in a great deal at CASB, and so, we've learned so much with taking a problem that seems almost impossible to solve and finding solutions for it that can help make it better in any way. So, I learned that for the first time, and it was amazing and incredible, and I loved the whole method and the whole design of it. So, in our last meeting with our SCR representatives, we did a SWOT analysis, so we found strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats within our school and within our district, and so, we found those within random groups, and then, at our next meeting tomorrow, we're getting together with groups to focus on, so these are the problems in our whole district, what does those problems look like in your school specifically? And we're having the students pick one weakness or one threat to focus on, and then, we're going to do the design thinking method within our meeting and say, "This is our problem," and kind of go through those different steps of empathizing, creating a prototype and a pitch, and doing all these things, so that we are also working to make a difference, not only on Weld-Meld, but working on solving these problems within our district. So, that's how we're bringing CASB back to our board, and Meg and I are really excited, although we are seniors and we won't go to CASB again, to share all of these things with our predecessors, essentially, to help them, and so, they also want to go to CASB in future years, because it is such a great experience. So, I think that's all we have for you today, unless you guys have any questions?
We do.
Oh, good.
Mr. Hayfley?
I don't have any questions. I just want to compliment you both on your leadership. I know that you're very humble people, and the only way that organizations work, as well as they do, is based on people like you and the sponsors like Mr. DeWitt and Dr. Pilch, and all of you should be very proud of what you've done, but for it to continue, we need to find, as you put it, the predecessors that will try to fill your shoes.
Yes.
So, you should both be very proud of what you've done, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other board comments? You've certainly taken it to a new level.
We have, and it will continue next semester and for years to come, we promise.
You have built the steps for people to follow, and then, for their own pathway.
We have.
But you've done, bless you, you've done a wonderful job, and we do express our gratitude for your efforts. It was a fun time in Sea Springs.
And thank you all for all of your support with not only the talent show, but just our board in general. We really, really do appreciate it.
Great. Go do homework.
Real quick.
Yeah. Again, seniors.
Mr. Lydiak has a question.
You did represent us very proudly and did an excellent job, and Meg, you were great on the panel, so thank you. And you know what? You can always go back to CASB as a future school board member.
Yeah, that would work.
You are not wrong. Probably only have to be 18 to run for the school board. Maybe?
Okay, we saw it here first. This is great. Thank you both.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks for reporting. Well, now, some real fun things happened. We're still in our house cleaning mode. We have revisions to policy GBGF, Federally Mandated Family Leave Act. Am I still on schedule?
Yes.
And as far as I know, this is an action item. I'd be glad to take a motion at this time. Any one of you could do that.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revision to policy GBGF, Federally Mandated Family and Medical Leave as presented.
Thank you, Terry.
Second.
Thank you very much, Doug. This alters a couple of processes involving dependents who are in the service, and also directs requests for family and medical leave through HR specifically, and then, exceptional requests go through our superintendent for review. You've had the opportunity to read through this. Are there questions, or is there discussion? Seeing nothing there, I will ask for a roll call, please, Ms. Richards.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is revision to policy GCKB, Administrative Staff Assignments and Transfers, and you've had the opportunity to look over this. It is an action item. I'd accept a motion at this time.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to policy GCKB, Administrative Staff Assignments and Transfers as presented.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Terry. And Michael. The next item is revision to policy GCKB, Administrative Staff Assignments and Transfers. And you've had the opportunity to look over this. It is an action item. I'd accept a motion at this time.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to policy GCKB, Administrative Staff Assignments and Transfers as presented.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Terry. And Michael. This refers specifically to guidelines for appointments for administrative positions, and it has a reference to the impact of some appointments on a probationary clock. I don't know if there are further questions or comments. Seeing none. Ms. Richards, roll call, please.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is the second read, adoption of policy DH, Bonded Employees and Officers. It's an action item. Be glad to have a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the revisions to policy DH, Bonded Employees and Officers as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. This once again refers to employees who handle 50 bucks or in funds. This was also related to your board members. And unless there are further questions, I'll call for a roll call. Ms. Richards.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. The last item in our sweep this evening is the second read and repeal of personnel policies, GDCA, GDCBA, GDCC, and GDCG, each of which have been subsumed in other locations in the policies. It is an action item. Motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 repeals policies GDCA, Classified Staff Sick Leave, GDCBA, Classified Staff Legal Leave, GDCC, Classified Staff Maternity, Paternity, and Parental Leave, and GDCG, Classified Staff Breavement Leave as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Comments or questions about any of these items that have been rearranged in policy? Seeing none. Ms. Richards, roll call, please.
Mr. DeWitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley?
Aye.
Mr. Lydiak?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Pappas?
Aye.
Dr. Richard?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is the instructional coaching update. Dr. Pilch, there's been a lot of changes in this coaching and a lot of review.
Yes.
I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. So as you all are aware, our instructional coach model is one of the program evaluations that we conducted earlier this school year as a part of our Innovation 2020 and our commitment in Innovation 2020 to review programs and to be certain that our resources are being channeled in the right direction to ensure student achievement is improving. So we made some changes to the coach model as we went into this school year, which Dr. Dattery will review with you. And then we also had folks from UNC come in and do some review of our instructional coaching practices and model, and they provided us with some commendations as well as recommendations, which Dr. Dattery will cover with you as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Stacy now.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch, President DeWitt, and members of the board. It is with pleasure that I bring to you tonight an update on our instructional coaching program and how our coaches are an integral part of the instructional design in District 6. I will share a little bit about what it means to be an instructional coach in District 6, their roles and their responsibilities, the operational changes, as Dr. Pilch mentioned, that were made to our instructional coaching program, the findings as well from the evaluation that we conducted last year, as well as some of the main priorities of our coaches this year. As I begin, I want to first ground us in Innovation 2020 and remind us that our instructional coaches are a part of student learning and achievement, priority three around implementing an instructional framework that reflects both the art and science of teaching to ensure all students learn. Our instructional coaches are a valuable part of this priority area for student learning and achievement. So I will begin by sharing with you what it means to be a coach in District 6. These five bullets on this slide outline the main points from supporting Innovation 2020 and the implementation therein to communicating respectfully with a sense of urgency, the focus on student learning. They are passionate about their belief to support our teachers in using powerful instructional strategies and practices that will improve student outcomes. While the last slide stated high-level areas of focus for instructional coaches, this slide outlines more specifically the roles and the responsibilities of the instructional coach. Depending on the needs of teachers, the building, or the district, coaches navigate and support teachers through a variety of avenues. They are supportive of instruction, curriculum, and assessment needs across the building and district, in addition to providing professional learning opportunities, unaffected instructional practices, and resources as requested. On any given day, the coach meets with a variety of teachers with varying needs and navigates their role accordingly. Over the last two years, we have been, we have made some operational changes to the coaching program in District 6 that have better supported our coaches, our teachers, and the building principals. First, principals have had more direct input on who their coach is in their building, largely focusing on the needs of the building and who best could support them with those areas of focus. In support of this, principals have been prioritizing the coaching activities and roles and responsibilities of the coaches within their building as well. Second, with time always being a challenge and never having enough, we did make some changes to when and how much coaches are being pulled for training and also analyzed what was missing for them to better support their building's needs. The coach contract time now matches the building's teacher's schedule, and the matching of the teacher's schedule time allowed coaches to participate in before and after-school planning, as well as leadership team meetings, just for a few, as a few examples. The coaches also had a coaching institute this summer, rather than pulling them out during the first few days of school, as we've typically done in years past. By doing Coaching Institute, by doing the Coaching Institute in the summer, the coaches received their training upfront, which allowed for more time in their buildings at the beginning of their school year. And finally, some adjustments were made in regard to how often coaches were being pulled for training throughout the year, and this was decreased by approximately 50%. This year, there are a total of 26 coaches supporting our 25 non-charter schools, and this is actually a total of 22.3 FTE. So not all of them are full-time, as you can see. Their areas of coaching expertise range from instruction in literacy, math, and blended learning, with some coaches working exclusively at one school, while others may be split between more than one school. Title funds primarily have full, or title schools, rather, primarily have full-time coaches, as they utilize funding from Title I money to fund the coach full-time. Three, then additional FTE support the instructional design of reading mastery in all but two of our elementary schools. And then we have two and a half coaches that are blended learning coaches, supporting all of the blended learning work that is going on across the district. So as I mentioned, last year, we contracted with Kristin Klaffenstein from UNC to conduct not only our blended learning study, which you heard about earlier this year in our board report, but we also did one on instructional coaching. This study provided us process recommendations that would support the likelihood of a positive impact of coaching on student achievement. The study was based on teacher surveys, coaching reports, and student-level data. These are the four questions that we sought to answer through the evaluation study. They include, or included, how many coaching cycles were completed? Are there systematic differences in teachers who receive coaching? Is the frequency of coaching related to student achievement and literacy? And what is the per pupil cost of the District 6 instructional coaching program? There were several commendations noted in the study. First of note is that overall, coaches are valued by teachers and principals in the buildings that they serve. The relationships are typically strong and supportive among staff, coaches, and administrators, and this was noted several times throughout the study results. Second, there are meaningful positive correlations, a correlation between the number of coaching cycles that teachers receive and the clarity of principal expectations, the teacher-coachability, and the teacher-reported value of the coach. All of these indicate positive outcomes of the instructional coaching model. And finally, there is more purposeful collaboration with district staff and building principals in determining who their instructional coach will be and in providing focus of the coach within the building. The main findings of the study indicated that, in summary, a district coaching strategy should focus on schools where coaching is integral to the larger school improvement plan, and in these cases, the likelihood of a positive impact of coaching on student outcomes is greater if the principal has well-communicated expectations about the high-leverage activities in which coaches should engage and how coaches will be held accountable for meeting their responsibilities. We also found that the per pupil cost of the instructional coach last year was $103. So as coaches, their main responsibility is to support others. And in order to do this most effectively, sometimes they too need to be developed, further developed, as coaches and supported to extend their learning. The main avenue of development for coaches is in the way of coaching meetings that occur two days per month, where they engage in book studies, engage in trainings from district staff, as well as each other. They review and analyze data, and they collaborate and learn from each other as well. I will end by sharing with you the mid-year priorities of our coaches this year. Coordinators are currently meeting at each site with the building coach and discussing school goals, their progress, and how to support the coaches to continue to provide appropriate support at the building level. Coaches continue to receive professional development on specific district initiatives around blended learning, English language development, literacy and math specifically. And in doing so, they stay abreast of current practices and models that have the highest impact on student learning. The team has also implemented a better communication system of Coach Line, similar to that of Principal Line, and this supports our goal of operational effectiveness for our coaches. And finally, coaches are engaging in their own professional learning community by visiting each other's schools, reflecting on effective practices observed, and then they're incorporating what they are learning about what works from their colleagues into their own coaching So I appreciate your time tonight, and I will be happy to address any questions or comments that you may have.
Dr. Richard, please.
Oh, I was just going to have you go back to the slide that says instructional coach study results.
Yes.
In these cases, the likelihood of a positive impact. Would you unpack that paragraph for us?
There's a lot in there. And what it's saying is this is correlational, that there's a positive impact of coaching on the student outcome. So when we looked at student data, we also looked at these other pieces of adult perception data and what the adults said. And what we noticed in the data, the student data, is that we had a higher impact on student outcomes if the principal has well-communicated the expectations about what the activities, high-leverage activities are that the coach will participate in, and how they would be held accountable for meeting those expectations. So when the principal, and think about even our UIP tonight that we talked about, our school UIPs, our principals, many of whom are very articulate with staff and with the coach about this is what we're working on, these are the high-leverage activities I want you to engage in, coach with teachers. Teachers understand those expectations, and when there was that continuity of that communication, we saw a greater outcome of student, student outcomes, student literacy outcomes.
Because the coaches were, the coaches were interviewed, the teachers were interviewed or surveyed, and the principals were as well. So what Stacy's talking about is that alignment of all three, when all three of those were in alignment of, yeah, there's clear, a clear understanding of what we're supposed to be doing, at those same sites is where we saw a greater increase in student achievement.
So a key variable here is the, is the principal's interest and ability to communicate with clarity what's needed and expected.
Yep. Absolutely. And, you know, you all have heard me say it before, but leadership matters. Leadership matters, and how well our principals communicate the expectations that they have for the coaches, as well as the expectations that they have for how their teachers engage with the coaches and utilize the coaches. That's an important piece of it as well.
So what do we know now about the desires of our principals in our buildings? As in, are the FTE that we have allotted here about what they're wanting, or are principals requesting more?
Certainly, our high schools are requesting more. We do not have the same level of support in coaching at our high schools that we have at our elementaries, largely because, again, our title schools are at our elementaries and then two of our middles. And all of our elementaries, really, even that have a halftime coach, a few of them have leveraged to figure out ways to use their, their building funds to have more of a coach. And many of them will say, certainly not all, but many of them, even at the elementary and middle level, would say they would like to have a coach more onsite, more, you know, full-time. They would all at least like to have one coach full-time in their building. And certainly, like I say, our high schools have one coach among all of them, among all the high schools. And that person focuses her time largely on induction, teachers that are going through the induction process, the brand-new teachers.
This is not an area that was in our millevy override.
So. That is true.
The possibility of expanding, expanding our coaches is pretty limited. The one area where we will probably look to expand over the next few years is in our blended learning coaches, our coaches who work directly with teachers to deliver the digital content, because we know we'll be expanding our digital content as a part of the millevy override.
And so just, and then a final one, the 103 out of the per pupil, how is that determined? Is that just a collection, addition of the salaries, or?
Yes. It was. She looked at the salaries and the number of students in each of the schools and then calculated it per, in looking at that. So it was all third-party, not that influence?
Thank you. Mr. Hayfley?
So much of this is based on Innovation 2020. Things have changed incrementally since I was in buildings, and what I appreciate now is that leaders are allowed to lead by selecting the appropriate people to be on their team. And then they understand what, based on 2020, what they're supposed to be doing, and they are allowed to have coaches, have ownership within that building because they're on their team. And I think that's changed in the last five years, and I think that's one of the main reasons that you've seen such positive results on what is occurring. And I really appreciate the fact that leaders are allowed to lead and coaches do, are part of that whole team.
Definitely.
Thank you both. It's obvious that this is a change for some of us coming in for the district a few years ago, and it certainly reinforces the idea that when we have teachers that are supported by principals in their buildings and selected to teach there, and we have support folk like these coaches who are welcomed into that work session, setting, the climate there is going to be receptive, and that $103 will go a lot farther, I think, than if it were spent on a location where the, where the match just isn't quite right between the school and the, and the coach. So thank you all for participating in this assessment and evaluating how, how we can do this better.
Yeah.
And you're probably going to continue to do that, but thank you for that.
Thank you. And if I could just add very quickly, I was remiss in not recognizing Ms. Diana Riley. She is our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and she, along with her team of coordinators, really are responsible for working closely with our coaches and our building leaders and our teachers to make all of this that I brought to you tonight the reality. So I just wanted to say thank you, Diana, for your leadership. So I just wanted to say thank you, Diana, for your leadership and to your coordinators for theirs, because it definitely takes a team of folks to come together and make this happen for our students at the end of the day. So, so thank you. I should have said that when I started.
Well, thank you for sharing the thank you, I guess, and spread that around for us. Thank you very much. The next item, Dr. Pilch, is the Colorado Education Network report.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Teresa Myers, our Director of Communications, is making her way to the podium. I asked her to, to provide this presentation for you all tonight. I want to do just a little bit of a set as we open it up. So some of you had the opportunity at the CASB convention to hear from the Colorado Education Network and to hear from Great Ed Colorado about their plans for promoting public education statewide. So what you're about to be, and some of you were a district leadership team as well when I shared this same video with our district leadership team. So what you're about to view on a video is really a video that launches a statewide campaign, if you will, they're not asking for any money, but a campaign to promote public education. And really to send the message around the importance of, of supporting and believing in our public education systems across the state. And then we're going to take you, give you some overview of who the Colorado Education Network is and a little bit about what their focus is. And then, and then after Teresa finishes that, I'll wrap up with how this may lead into a statewide ballot measure in the future possibly. So I'm going to kick it off to you, Teresa.
All right. Well, I'm going to start off with a video that's on the Colorado Education Network website. And for those of you who are interested, it is just www.coloradoeducationnetwork.org.
And we'll be linking this video to our district website for any folks who might be viewing it and want to share it or view it again.
What makes Colorado, Colorado? Is it just the outline of our state's borders? Or is it something greater? What makes a school, a school? Is it just a place kids go until they're old enough to do something else? Or is it something bigger? Is it where we build the future? For too long, a lot of Colorado schools have been struggling, struggling to prevent overcrowded classrooms, struggling to provide students the chance to build a robot, make music, discover their passion, reach their limitless potential. Ultimately, that hurts all of us. They say if you want to know what a community values, look at how its children are treated. And if you want a sense of what a community hopes for the future, just look at how it values schools. Coloradans say they want more well-rounded schools, more electives, more career and college opportunities for young people. To reach those goals, we need to act. We need to support our students, our communities, our future. When we invest in our schools fairly, sustainably, completely, we invest in our future. What makes Colorado, Colorado? Tomorrow, she does. Today, you do.
That is a very powerful video that they are, now have up on their website for public view through the Colorado Education Network. I'm going to go through this presentation real quick. That is also, there are several presentations that are also up on the website. I'm having a hard time getting into this pre-set mode.
I'll say a few things while you're getting that set.
Yeah.
Okay. So there are three different versions of, of the presentation around Colorado Education Network on their website. We're showing you the shortest PowerPoint version, so there's, there's two other versions if you want more detail than what we're going to give you tonight in, in the presentation tonight. And the idea is that the Colorado Education Network folks would begin to promote the promise of Colorado statewide and that we would push out this information to, to our many different organizations, our PTO and PTAs, our District Accountability Committee. We did share this information last week with our Business Advisory Committee. You all know who those folks are, 10 or so of our business leaders in the community serve on that. And we did share this information with them and also got feedback from them on how we might use it in promoting public education in the community. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So really, this is a statewide effort to promote public education, as Dr. Pilch said. The Colorado Education Network is a conglomeration of different people who support public education in Colorado, including the School Finance Project and other organizations that have traditionally supported public education. They're now bonding together to really make this push to educate people on what public education is in Colorado and what it means for our future. And really, they're centered around this idea of this is a promise. It's a promise that we make to our children so that they become the promise of our future. And really, what they're talking about is creating students who have the potential as thinkers, leaders, and caretakers for generations and the future. Again, you'll see some familiar themes in this presentation about how important and integral public education and a successful and excellent publication is to the economy of the state of Colorado. That's not new to you. We know that that's important to us locally as well. And we are not alone in that idea that if we don't invest in our students, we will not be investing in our communities and our state economy. So this talks a little bit about how our students will be the employers of tomorrow. They'll be working in industry as well as caretakers for us in the healthcare industries. They will be our future educators as well as our future leaders in the state of Colorado. This is an interesting slide that talks about how Colorado has one of the fastest-growing economies in the country and yet spends some of the least amount of money on public education. And I know that, again, we're preaching to the choir here a little bit, but I don't think a lot of people understand that since the Great Recession in 2009, we have struggled to reinstate some of the funding that was cut during those years when the state was pulling back dollars for education. And now we're, we've dug ourselves a hole, really. We're, we're not being able to dig out of, get out of. So this talks about how, really, for a state that has such a great and strong economy, we aren't investing in public schools at the rate that other states in the country are. And really, I think you know this as well, great education happens every day, yet funding shortfalls mean that we cannot do everything for students. It is not universal, it is not sustainable, and it's not available for every child. And really, what this campaign is focusing on is adequacy and equity for all students, that every student has access to the educational opportunities that their neighbors have. And it doesn't, isn't based on someone's zip code as to what resources and what educational opportunities are available for them. So this is a pretty interesting graph that they have included in their presentation that talks about how funding in Colorado has been impacted by state policies, amendments to the Constitution, as well as just a general change in policy at the state level as far as school funding. So if you'll look at the years at the bottom, the green line going across is the national average spent per pupil on public education. The red line is Colorado. And as you will see, as different constitutional amendments and policies have been enacted in the state of Colorado, it has removed more and more dollars from public education. You'll see the Gallagher Amendment in that first line. I think some of you know that that dictates how much businesses are responsible in property taxes for measures that affect public education funding. You'll see when the Tabor Amendment passed, the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, which impacts how and when we can ask for additional funding from our taxpayers. Amendment 23, which made a promise to fund public education, but as many of you know, has not really succeeded in that endeavor. And then, of course, the negative factor, which is confusing to many, but as you will know as, as education experts and Board of Education members, the negative factor actually just pulled back dollars from school districts based on the factors that we are funded on, such as for at-risk students, transportation, small, small districts receive a factor of additional funding through public education. So that meant that dollars were pulled back from every school district in the state. And as you've heard before, that impact for us has been about $20 million in lost funding every single year. And as this Colorado Education Network program really stresses, funding does matter. And there is now research to show that funding does increase student achievement and it does increase graduation rates. And this talks about how students who are low-income students actually benefit more when investments are made in public education. Their high school graduation rates go up significantly and they earn higher wages as adults. And that's really where the economic impact comes in as well. The employability and the ability to earn dollars and return those to a community really impact the economy. So really, what this campaign is about is talking about investing and believing in public education, that it's fundamental to our families, our communities, and our state, that we are not investing adequately or equitably in education, and really urging people to be part of an informed solution to really educate themselves on this effort and to educate themselves on what our shortfalls are in state funding and what it would mean to invest in public schools. And I think that's the end of it, Dr. Pilch.
Thank you. So I think I'll open it up to you all first, if you have any questions that you want to ask, you know, just right away, based on the information that Teresa or I have shared. And then I'll, then I'll talk a little bit about kind of what I think next steps might be.
Well, for me, Dr. Pilch, it, it sure feels like some of this material, we've just seen two bits of it, but some of this material might be helpful in our outreach to our community. Some of this could be tools we could employ. So I guess I'd be one who'd be interested in seeing how we can participate in, in this and take advantage of the materials that are becoming available.
So a lot of you know Lisa Wile. She is a former Greeley Central graduate, and her parents are still here in the community. And she, she is the Executive Director of Great Education Colorado. And so she, she is very instrumental in, in pushing this initiative and actually leading this initiative and would very much like to come up and, and talk more about how we, as a Board of Education Superintendent, can be more involved in promoting the, the promise of Colorado. We have some work to do here first locally at our site, you know, get some links to our website, begin to get some pictures and stories of our students on the website. We didn't push this out earlier because we didn't want to confuse people with our mill levy override, because this does seem like a campaign. And so we stuck to the mill levy override campaign. But now I'm encouraged about this and would like to see our involvement in it. So what I expect will be happening next, as we have spoken a little bit earlier about the superintendents across the state, most of us have come to agreement around a new funding formula that we believe should, should be the new formula for the state of Colorado, should there be funding to fund that formula. The new funding formula, of course, would cost the state of Colorado much more than what is currently being invested in public education statewide. The really impressive thing about this is that most of the superintendents have come around this and are in agreement on this funding formula. And Representative Dave Young, who is one of our local representatives, has agreed to carry the legislation this legislative season to promote the new funding formula. So, so basically, what would happen is Representative Young would carry the legislation. Ideally, we would get another bipartisan supporter of it, and I think he's working to, to try to secure that. And we know that the legislators would possibly want to, to make some tweaks and changes in it. But ideally, the legislators would, would get passage of the new funding formula, knowing that there is not a plan for how to fulfill that funding formula. The new formula would cost about 1.2 billion to 1.5 billion to fund statewide. And then what would happen is Great Ed Colorado and the Colorado Education Network and the Colorado School Finance Project, along with other leaders in the state, would, would come alongside that and begin to promote the possibility of a statewide ballot measure. So, well, some of us at CASB had an opportunity to hear what, what some of the possibilities are for that ballot measure. And I'd be happy to have our, our lobbyists come and, and even Lisa Wile come and really talk through those as they become more reality. Right now, I think there were seven titles that were submitted, and they're waiting for feedback on those titles. And then they'll begin to formulate what a ballot measure might look like. So the good news is, at this point, the ballot measure does not look like, say, for example, a statewide sales tax. Really, most of these titles would, would either lift some of the constraints that are on our legislators to generate funding for public education, or would actually require our legislators to list some, lift and fulfill the dollars for public education. So thereby, collecting additional revenue in a way that the legislators could design. So it's, it's pretty, a pretty fascinating way to look at a change in creating additional revenue in the state of Colorado. Some of the titles require an amendment to the Constitution, which would require a 55% vote statewide to pass. Some of them just require things to be removed from the Constitution, which if you're removing, you, you don't have to have the 55% is my understanding. I think that if this continues to go forward, we will be asked to be a part of, of a future statewide campaign. And I think at some point, our board will have to make a decision whether or not they want, you all, want to support a statewide campaign, not only to promote public education, but really to promote the possibility of, of increasing funding in Colorado for education. The funding formula that the superintendents have, have designed, and really, it's been almost two years of work that have gone into this. They've utilized some of the best experts in the, in the country, really, to develop this and the best research that's out there around what it really costs to educate children and to educate them in an adequate and equitable way. What we see right now in the state of Colorado, and although we are very, very appreciative of the passage of our mill levy override, what we know is we are still millions of dollars below where we should be and, and what it costs to educate children. I sat in a superintendent's meeting here two weeks ago where almost every superintendent in the room said that in 2018, their local community will go yet again for another mill levy override or a mill and a bond or a bond override. Thereby, I think, demonstrating to us that school districts cannot do the work that they're being asked to do on the dollars we're provided by the state and, and the current override dollars that we have, unfortunately. So I'm about done. This, this new formula would, would be very beneficial to District Six, very beneficial, because it takes into account many of the things that we are having to do without additional funding. So it takes into account students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, both. It takes into account students who are identified as gifted and talented. It, it, it promotes the funding of kindergarten full-time rather than the .58 of funding we now receive for kindergarten students, although most of our kindergartners are here full-time. So it would, it would dramatically benefit District Six to the tune of about 40 to 45 million annually if it were to go forward. And so, and then statewide, there are, there are districts that don't benefit as much from it. There are six districts that if they actually were completely true to the formula, they would actually go backwards in their state funding. So what the super, what the superintendents have agreed to and what we are promoting is that those districts be held harmless, that nobody goes backwards in funding as a result of this. It's a lot of information at 7:15 at night.
Pretty helpful and clear, though. Thank you very much. So we'll anticipate some more info.
Teresa, anything else you want to add?
No, I just encourage you to go on. You can join the Colorado Education Network and receive emails and text messages even. They have a Facebook page. It's got great information on it. But really explore this website a little bit. They're really focusing on student stories, and I think you'll find that interesting in lieu of our recent campaign, so.
We really, I would strongly encourage you to sign up. We, we want to get involved in this. We are one of the large districts in the state of Colorado. We know this. And, and we benefit from having, you know, a, a large percentage of students in our school district proportionally in relation to the rest of the state. And, and so we want, we want our voice heard in a campaign. And, and so we want, we want our voice heard in a campaign like this.
Good deal. Thanks for your enthusiasm, both of you. Well, the next item on our agenda is to say goodnight. This concludes our board meeting and we'll see you in 2018.